Take that one.
That's yours.
Yeah, we'll shift in this way because well, Peter's gonna come up eventually. Good afternoon, good evening. I'll officially call to order the regular meeting of Coachella Valley Water Authority Board of Directors. Evening meeting at 6:00 PM here in Coachella. It's March 28th, 2023. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Got that done. And roll call, please.
Good evening, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada.
Here.
Director Bianco.
Here.
And Director Aguilar.
Here.
Director Nelson will is arriving, he's on his way and will note his on the record.
We're gonna go this way. Okay. Well, hopefully he didn't take Avenue 50 to get here. Because you have to go around now. For anyone that's not driven on Avenue 50 yet this week. It's closed for Coachella Fest for the next few weeks, so. Can't go between Monroe and Madison, I think. So do we have any additions, deletions, or adjustments to today's agenda?
No, we do not.
Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment? Director Nelson has entered the building. Approaching the dice. On Peter. Do we have anyone from the public wishing to comment at this time? I don't see any public in the room. Anybody online?
I would just ask if anybody on Zoom would like to provide a public comment, please use the raise hand feature at this at this time. And I do not see any, Mr. President.
Fair enough. Let me know if you see any hands get raised along the way. Do want to welcome Assistant General Manager Dan Charlton to the dice. In the absence of our usual general manager, Jim, who is on vacation. I hope he's having a nice time.
Again?
That's funny. That's funny, alright. Glad everyone's laughing.
Hopefully he's watching.
That's perfect. This brings us to the consent calendar, items five A through F as in Frank. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Passed 5-0. Onto the action calendar. You drove here, what did it take, 15 minutes? Maybe we'll finish before 15 minutes.
It took me 16 minutes to get from Palm Desert.
So we're gonna.
How's that?
See if we can beat that time.
Is that good?
Yeah, that's pretty good.
And I honest, I didn't speed.
I bet you didn't. You were stuck behind a district vehicle who was not speeding.
That's for sure.
Seven A, we're into this on-call easement and property acquisition services. Hi, David. You know, when I first saw the dollar amount, I thought, does that include the property too? Because it seems high. But then I looked at what they're doing, it's actually quite a bit of work, including a lot of in-person work. And go ahead and take the item.
Yes, so there are there are two items actually on request here as part of this project. The first request is to authorize the general manager to execute a biennial professional services agreement with Clark Land Resources Incorporated and Docking Engineering for on-call easement and land acquisition services. As you know, many of our capital improvement projects require easements or land acquisition. They tend to be a bit labor-intensive, depending on the workload, it's more efficient to have a consultant onboard to help facilitate. So that's the first first ask. The second ask is to authorize the general manager to execute task order number one to the previously mentioned professional services agreement to Docking Engineering in the amount of $2,568,790. Excuse me, for the easement and property acquisition for Thousand Palms Flood Control Project. The request includes a 10% contingency of $257,000 with a total request of $2825,790. So the Thousand Palms Flood Control Project, the is about $100 million construction project. The footprint for the project crosses about 75, sorry, parcels, which is about 350 acres of land. We also have a requirement as part of the Coachella Valley Multi-Species Habitat Conservation Project Plan to buy or to acquire 550 acres of land and place it into conservation. The hope is that some of this 350 acres, depending on how it plays out with the footprint and and the negotiations, can be applied to the 550, in some cases that may not be the case. So we anticipate anywhere from 700 to 900 acres roughly of land that we may have to acquire for the project.
So that that acquisition would also be part of that?
Yes.
Is also part of that PSA?
Yes. Well, the the consultant services will be part of the PSA. The acquisition would be brought to the board another time, once we work through the negotiation.
But they would do the work to identify the parcels and that sort of thing? Just a question, I know we do, I think we do some in-house work along the first item, easements and and so forth. Are we still going to be doing some of that work in-house?
We do, we try to do that when we can and when it's feasible, depending on the schedules. This will help us keep the projects on schedule. The workload right away department does handle more than just easements and land acquisitions, there's permitting and that sort of thing too. So this allows us to maintain our customer service, while at the same time being able to facilitate execution of capital improvements.
Okay. And that that agreement would be flexible so that when we need them, they would do it?
Yes.
And when we could do it ourselves, we'd be able to do it ourselves?
Absolutely. And anytime we were going to use them as an on-call, we would bring them back for whatever project we're using them on to the board for permission to execute a task order.
Were there other, there were other bidders? You know what I noticed in the in the other bidders, there's no dollar amounts in there. Was it just scores by the evaluators?
Yeah, well, we had, so we we put out an RFP, we received three responses back. We did ask within the RFP to give us a proposal for the task order for the Thousand Palms Project. And then we had a team of folks that reviewed their their proposal. The third bidder came in, at least for the task order, came in very, very low, which was an indication of a lack of complete understanding of what was needed, for one. And then after looking through the proposals, the group agreed that their proposal wasn't compliant with what we were looking for.
Right, understood, okay.
So, David, help me understand what the difference between Clark Land Resources and Docking? What what's the difference in their tasks? Are they both hired to essentially do the same task? And then we just give whatever task comes up to either or, or?
Yeah, the intent to have two is to just maintain some flexibility. In the event one is overburdened, it gives us an opportunity to have another user. So in this instance, for example, we do task order one with Docking. If the next project that comes up and we require land acquisition, we'd be we'd be going with Clark.
And we're already pulling the trigger on task order one for 2.5 million?
That would be the request here before you. So the so the two requests are, the first request is a professional services agreement to place them under an on-call contract. And then the second request would be to execute task order number one with Docking under this PSA.
But but no money to?
No money to Clark.
And and the the 2.5, the 2.5 million, that's we have, we already have appraisals and we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna acquire, we're gonna acquire property with this? Or is this just simply for the for the for the work?
That's for the work, for them to facilitate appraisal, obtaining appraisals. For working with entitlement or title companies, for the work engaging with the property owners themselves, any potential Phase One environmental documents we would need for the acquisition.
This would pay for title reports, everything is included in here?
Yes.
Appraisals?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm fine with it, I just want to ask a question. So so this whole project is going to tie in to the the other flood project that we have on the other side of Sun City, on the east side of Sun City, correct? It's just gonna all tie in together?
Yes.
Okay.
And the last time you brought this, it's been a while, but I recall that the proposal is for us to build these sections and and phases, starting from the bottom, right? And and work our way up? And is that still the plan, is is that where you're?
When you construct it, you would work from the bottom up. We are working on obtaining, you know, grant funding or additional funding sources for the project. And the plan right now is to phase these in a manner that would facilitate constructing in phases from the bottom up, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and and then you think that doing all phases is a is a is a five-year timeline, a 10-year timeline? You said that you're estimating $100 million worth of of infrastructure here. How much of it do we have, or what's the long-term financial plan for this?
Right now, the the near term obviously is to acquire the land. We just completed the environmental documents, so we're looking to acquire the land first. We are looking to, we will most likely be coming back to you here in the coming months, next fiscal year, to facilitate with the or to work it out with the engineered record to phase it, to modify the plans in such a way that it'll allow us to phase it. And then we'll be looking at the the funding mechanisms for for the project. We are, we do, we are looking at, in terms of the timing for all the construction, we expect the land acquisition to be about two years roughly. And then ideally by then, we'll have a better sense for where we're at from a funding perspective.
So we probably won't do Phase One for a good five years, maybe?
At least, at least three years.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, I just wanted to get a sense of it.
Probably a decade.
It's a big.
It's a big project.
It's gonna take a decade, probably.
Yeah, I expected it to take at least 10 years for the whole thing. Assuming we're gonna get the funding.
Thank you, thank you for that update.
Is there a motion to approve seven A?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed 5-0.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. B, authorize general manager to execute a letter of intent with Lone Star Blower. Not gonna say what that sounds like. Alright, Armando.
Good evening, President Powell, members of the board, audience, fellow staff. And just for the record, my name's Armando Rodriguez with the Engineering Department. The purpose of this board action item is to seek authorization for the general manager to execute a letter of intent with Lone Star blowers, so we can pre-select the blowwork equipment that we very much need for the Warp 7 Irrigation Improvements Project. In essence, what we're doing here with this project is to replace aging and unreliable blowers. They're about 27 years old. And to house them inside an irrigation building. Now, with this typical of large equipment and sophisticated equipment, we like to pre-select. That is, we go out to bid the irrigation equipment to the available manufacturers. In this case, there was four respondents who gave us a proposal. We believe this is the best way that we can review the equipment thoroughly vetted so that, A, we can reduce lead, long lead items that are a concern within construction industry. We can have a customized design specific for the project. And then overall, have an overall lower construction cost. Also, what this will do is preset a maximum guaranteed price, right? We went out, we got a bid, and we got a really good bid from Lone Star, one of the the lowest bids. And so what this would do is obligate the manufacturer to basically give us a hold of about one year on the price of the project. And then we will put that price within a bidding document and then then turn over the procurement of the blowers to the contractors. So with with that, I'll stop to see if there's any specific questions, or you guys, or the board would like additional presentation on this item.
I think that's.
Okay.
Yeah. There a motion to approve?
I'll move for approval.
One second. And no other discussion, why don't we vote? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Passed 5-0, thanks. Alright, so and then I have a real estate concern in proximity to these next two items, so I'm refusing.
We'll wait for President Powell to exit the room.
So just for the record, in regard to apparent, to avoid even the appearance of a conflict because of a property ownership within proximity to item C and D, President John Powell has left the dice in the room for those items.
Alright, good evening. The purpose of this item is to approve, for the board to approve the solicitation of bids for the construction of the Phase Two portion of Irrigation Lateral 11964-75. The Phase Two portion of work is about 10,400 linear feet of pipe replacement. It includes new vaults, valves, and meters, mainline isolation during the work. And without all, let's take any questions.
Thank you. Just just wondering why this isn't part of the set of projects that that we have?
It is.
It is?
It is, yes.
Okay, I'm just trying to look for that and I couldn't see it, but yeah, well, that makes sense, it's already an identified project, so I don't have any.
Sorry, it is in the budget impact statement.
Okay, thank you, thank you for pointing it out. I don't have any other questions, it seems like it's part of an identified project. With that, all those in favor, say aye. Well, I'll have, I'll make a motion.
And I'll second your motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
And then we'll move on to item D.
Yeah, great appreciate the exercise, Sylvia. Keep us awake. Yeah, it is. So good evening again, Armando Rodriguez, Engineering Department. The purpose of this board action item is to seek approval to work construction contract with AMCO Tibia Alabasi, as the lowest responsible bid for the Monroe Trunk Sewer Project. We're also requesting additional approval of a task order with NV5 for archaeological services for $30,414. A task order with NV5 again for soil testing. And then project management at $100,000, and then to the inspection cost of $218,000. And project contingency $150,000. Let me just take a moment to clarify that there was a small error in the board action item. Really, the board action states task order four for NV5 for $48,240 for soil testing, but that should really be task order one. I apologize for that small error in regards to the task order. But the total request that we're asking at this moment is $279,987. The project will install 4,100 linear feet of eight inch pipeline from the intersection of Monroe and 42 all the way to Wilma in Monroe. And this project is very much needed. It was really much requested by Torres Martinez Desert Coaling Indians. And it will provide sewer service, a centralized sewer service to about 33 homes, a park, and I believe there's even a church in this vicinity within Avenue, what we call Avenue 64 subdivision. We, at least staff, has been very successful in obtaining grant funding, both USDA and about 1.3 million, and Indian Health Services about 1.3. So the project is fully funded with these grants. And I'll just stop there to see if there's any additional questions from the board, or would you like to continue with the presentation?
I have a question, can you, can you just, I know it's in the report, but I'd like to hear it. Just summarize the the bidding process, number of bidders?
Absolutely.
The distinction between the bids, et cetera?
So we so we did duly advertise the project on November 9. And we also had a pre-bid conference at the site, which included not only representatives from Indian Health Services, but also tribe. And we did have a lot of contractors attend onsite, and we looked and reviewed the whole environment. And on February 15, 2023, we received a total of five bids. And with the lowest one being Alabasi at 1.5 million, to about 2, 2 million. When we looked at the bids, we were really surprised that we got a bid very low. And so usually with this climate, bids are coming in a lot higher than our estimates. And we were surprised that the bid was actually 10% lower than what we anticipated. We went back and looked at the bid items and we, everyone looked fine, there was not no anomalies. And so we think we got a great price from Alabasi on this project.
Well, there's no road there.
There is no road.
There's no road, so it's not like you're fixing a road.
Right.
So I just wanted to tell you guys, I'm sorry, that that's, that's not all Indian reservation, that whole section. There's private property in there.
I will have to come back and and look at this, the pipeline itself is being installed west of the section line. So it's all gonna be all within public right away, not tribal land. I do believe there's a lot of tees within the area to the to the east. I would just have to come back and and provide you that that data in regards to what lotes and which is lotte and which is tribal.
Okay, well, I I don't want, I'm in support of this project, but and I don't want to open up any old wounds here, but is this not a contractor that we had some issues with at one point a while back? And if so, were those issues all resolved? And do we, are we talking about a clean slate now? Can somebody?
Thank you, Kerry.
Yes, so this contractor worked on the Wasteway project, that might be the one you're referring to, but that has been resolved, at least from the district's standpoint. And they are currently working on the large stormwater project David's group's working on in the Coachella Valley Stormwater Channel, the one from Avenue 54 down to Thermal Drop. And we've not had any issues with them on that. They've also done a couple of other projects for us, the Fillmore Ditch Project, which was also over there by Warp Four. So.
Okay.
They they also helped us with some storm damage along Highway 86 and and Avenue 50, or 86, and they did a really good job, so.
Thank you.
Armando, I'll just comment that I'm happy to see that this project is finally going to be constructed. It is my understanding that this has been a project in the works for at least maybe five years or so. It is a project that is primarily being, I think it was identified by the tribe. As you mentioned, it's fully grant-funded. I know that the tribe had some concerns. And we had to act pretty fast to make sure that we got this item before the board today, knowing that the bid is only good for, I think, 60 days or so. And so those those issues with the tribe were resolved pretty last minute. I had some conversations with the tribal council. And so I I thank you for bringing up the Alabasi thing. I had not remembered that, but the way I recall it, it had to do with the storm event that we had, right, that caused some issues and then.
Yeah, we wouldn't want to get into too much detail about.
So, yeah, so I don't, I don't have any concerns, thank you, Jeff. But I I'll make a motion to approve, I don't know if you you did, but if you have it, I'll make a motion.
I did not.
Okay, so I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. No further questions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, the motion passes.
So brings us to seven E. And this is task order two with DALL. Go ahead, David.
Yes, this is also a two, two item ask. The first is authorize the general manager to execute task order number two with DALL consultants in the amount of $83,800 to provide bid support during the bid advertisement for the project and to address some additional legwork required to bring the environmental documents in compliance with IED concerns. And then the second ask here is to authorize the solicitation of bids for the project. And I'll I'll stop there and take any questions.
Right, and so we're doing that, it's it's a good project. When you do the authorization and the solicitation of bids, that's like saying, if we go out on the street, we better be serious about this.
Right.
Yeah. So even though we're gonna see the approval again.
Yes, you will, you will see what the bid is when it comes in and you'll have an opportunity.
Then we'll have an opportunity to prove it then.
Yes, to have a reaction.
But you know, yeah.
That's right.
And and just coincidentally, I actually executed the funding agreement with San Diego for the construction for this project today.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll move approval, Mr. Charlie.
Second.
Good.
And I just have a general question as relates to the funding. I did see that it's a portion of it is, it looks like San Diego and a portion of it is, is it San Luis Rey?
Yes.
And I know that we've had some conversations just recently about just taking every opportunity that we have in the future to secure water that would be created from projects. And so my question is, is, is in general, why why are they paying for it?
Both parties, San Luis Rey and San Diego County Water Authority benefit or are contribute as far as the CCLP project, the Coachella Canal lining project. They funded a portion of that, they obtained some waters as a result of the lining part of that project. And this particular area requires quite a bit of maintenance relatively regularly as a result of the expansive clay soils in this location. And they stand to benefit from the removal of these, of the concrete in this area, which is part of this con, this this project. And as such, they will not incur those replacement costs over time.
We just, we just had a recent project where I thought I'd just seen not too long ago a recent project where we were gonna change out some of those panels, did that ever happen, or? I recall having a conversation about a potential project to replace panels.
So, so this project to get away, basically remove 50% of the future cracking repairs that is funded by San Diego and the San Luis Rey. So there's a huge benefit by them removing those panels in their entirety. They will still have to do replacement of future panels outside the area, which is 50%. And probably in three years, we'll be bringing a bid back to do some repair work outside.
Okay, it's a great project, I was just wondering, I don't. And they should pay for it.
Yeah, so we've got to be the first wa, water district in the state to be removing cement panels in a canal, right? But it, but it makes a lot of sense because there's, with the hydraulic conditions behind the panels and their cracking and there's a lot of, there's expensive repair work to do. That to line it with clay, stop the seepage and stop the ongoing maintenance cost makes a lot of sense. Reason, part of the reason. Reason, part of the reason why they're in is this, when we did the quantification settlement agreement in oh four, this was part of that, you know, global settlement where the San Luis Rey got a portion of the savings from the, from this canal and as did San Diego's.
Yeah, okay, yeah, it sounds like a win-win, so.
Okay, good.
Good, thank you.
We have a motion and a second, so are we ready to vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Pass or fail vote? Seven F. This is the funding for the Sultan Nutrient Management. Sultan. Zoe, hello?
Good evening, President Powell, members of the board. This item is a request to authorize task order number one to the professional services agreement with Wes Yost in the amount of two hundred and five thousand two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for independent technical expert services. I don't have a presentation for you today, but I did want to quickly touch on some of the highlights that have been achieved with the implementation of the CVS NMP and how this item fits into it. So we had our groundwater monitoring work plan approved in February of twen, uh, February twenty-one of twenty twenty-one. Where we've just completed the second progress report and have sampled seventy-seven percent of the wells. We have also filled eleven of twenty-four monitoring data gaps. Six wells in, very shallow wells in the East Valley were paid sixty-one percent of the cost by a Coachella Valley Mountain Conservancy Grant. Three were constructed by CBWD, one by Mission Springs Water District. Two additional ones will be funded also by Coachella Valley Mountain Conservancy Grant. That'll be a hundred percent of the construction cross, uh, cost in fiscal year twenty-four. And then all of the remaining ones are going to be built by the Department of Water Resources under their Technical Support Services, following a site visit that confirms that the sites are eligible for a notice of exemption under CEQA. In terms of implementation of the development work plan to actually update the Coachella Valley Sultan Nutrient Management Plan, our work plan was approved in October of twenty twenty-one. We executed an MOU with all of the partner agencies, water and wastewater agencies of the Coachella Valley for that implementation and cost sharing and executed a contract, this professional service agreement, and notice to proceed in July of twenty twenty-two. Since then, we've developed and released a stakeholder engagement framework. We launched the CVS NMP dot com website, which will be the project website shared by all the agencies. We held our first project kickoff in community workshop on March twenty-second. And we have began the preliminary work on tasks threes and four to characterize nutrient and TDS loading to the Coachella Valley as well as current groundwater quality conditions. We also worked on finalizing the tax. So that, that development work plan that was approved by the regional board did call for the formation of a technical advisory committee with one independent member funded by the agencies. All of the agencies reviewed a list that was suggested by the consultant Wes Yost. It included, you know, various candidates. And after reviewing that and in consultation with the Regional Water Quality Control Board, we shortlisted Lurdo, Lurdo and Scalmanini Consulting Engineering. They bring a real depth of experience with regards to Sultan Nutrient Management Planning in the Central Valley and just years of experience with modeling. So it seemed like a really good fit in terms of what we were looking for and something that the regional board could support. Now, in terms of cost, the two hundred and five thousand two hundred and ninety-five includes all five fiscal years of work. Per the MOU agreement, CBWD would pay forty-five point five percent or ninety-three thousand four hundred and nine. In the table included with the action item shows the fiscal year spanning, which ranged from a low in twenty twenty-three of five thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight and most years being twenty-three thousand three hundred and fifty-two. So thank you for allowing me to provide you this update. And the item that we're requesting is approval of this task order to bring in Luteroff and Scalmanini to fill in those, that role of an independent technical advisory committee member.
Thank you so much.
Bruderoff and Scalmanini? Is that close?
Pretty, how would we henceforth call them L S C E?
That name makes me hungry. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass by vote. All right, the fun one. Gee.
He's here, where did he go?
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
President Powell, members of the board. My name's Adam McWay and I'm here to request an increase to the conservation program payments budget in the amount of one million dollars. So that'll bring the total budget for the year, fiscal year to fourteen point three nine five million. The adopted budget at the beginning of the fiscal year was initially two point eight nine five million. And the board increased that by three million in September twenty twenty-two and by another seven point five million in January of twenty twenty-three. So there was an error in the BAI where it says seven million. And that brought the total budget to thirteen point three nine five million. And that additional funding that's been added to the budget is ten point five. So today's request will bring the additional funding to eleven point five million. Those allocations to date have all been funded by, through drought penalties. From September of twenty twenty-two through February twenty twenty-three, approximately ten point two million has been assessed in drought penalties. And we expect if those are rescinded in April, that the total drought penalties assessed to be approximately eleven million dollars. So there is an approx, uh, gap of about five hundred thousand between today's request and the total estimated assessed drought penalties. Those could be covered by reserves in the domestic water fund. Or if the board prefers, we could adjust today's request down to five hundred thousand and that would closely align with what we expect the drought penalties to end up being. To date, we've paid out about eight million six hundred and seventy thousand dollars in turf, or rebates. And an additional four million seven hundred and seventy thousand is currently reserved following completed and approved pre-site inspections. So that's a total of thirteen million four hundred and forty thousand. So right now, we're over budget just about forty-six thousand dollars. And there are scheduled over the next course of the next week or two, that could go up another hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars if, if those are all approved. So if the full million is approved today, we would have about seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars available to close out the fiscal year or two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, I guess, if it's only five hundred. And if we did the full million, we, that would equate to approximately four point seven million square feet of turf for the fiscal year, which we would estimate to be about eight hundred and five acre feet of water savings a year.
And, and that would be, the full million would be enough to cover the cities that are matching?
So currently, I think between, between the three cities, there's about three hundred and nine thousand available. So Ranch Mirage has around ninety-four, Palm Desert, one oh nine, Indian Wells, one oh six.
So those are amounts that those cities have already approved?
Right.
To match our dol.
To match our dollars, but they haven't been reserved yet.
When is this gonna go into effect, did you say?
The.
Getting rid of the drought penalties?
We don't have a specific date.
We're gonna make it right away, right?
I think Scott's gonna talk more specifically to eliminate the drought penalties. So the drought penalties are adopted by an ordinance. And so we do have to rescind those via ordinance, which requires publication and notice ten days prior. So we expect to bring something back to board April eleventh at the upcoming board meeting. And for, for billing purposes, I think we could have those be effective April first to reset, retroactive to April first. So no longer charged April first going forward.
Regarding the, regarding the figures you gave, the eight million, and I think the four million that you said is.
Oh, that's been spent and reserved.
And reserved. Are all those, are all those fees that we, that we assessed and, and how, and how long? In, in, in two years and? What would you say is the timeframe on that?
The eight, um, what was it? So we've spent, so that's just this fiscal year. We've paid out eight million six hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Just this fiscal year.
In rebates. So the vast majority of that is turf rebates, but all our rebate programs are paid out of the same line item. And there's currently four million seven hundred and seventy thousand. And that's just turf that's been approved. We've, the customers applied for the rebate. We've gone and done the pre-site inspection, approved the project. So now they have ninety days to complete that.
So, so we've, so, just so you can help me remember, we've been collecting this drought penalty for how long now, for, for?
So the drought penalties went into effect September twenty twenty-two. And so the number I gave you, the ten point two million, that's September twenty twenty-two through the end of February.
So not even, not even a year? So not even a year? Okay, wow, and.
It's one point seven a month.
Okay, and.
So we add to that the March number.
And so, um, the, these other MOUs that we have with the cities, do they change, do they change our rebate? So right now, we have a general rebate that we give out to any customer in the Coachella Valley. When we have these MOUs with the cities, does that come with?
No, they didn't change anything we do. Some of the cities had different requirements or limits that they would pay. So like they would pay for less square footage than we do. And I think they also reduced the, they did a full match for residential, but a one dollar match for like HOA commercial.
We just handled all the paperwork and did all that.
Yeah, and then inspections.
They gave us the money and we did it.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you're a resident there, so it didn't, it was still three dollars a square foot for us.
And then the, and then the, the additional was whatever they put in.
That's correct, it was two or three dollars on top of that.
Yeah, and we paid that to the customer directly and then invoiced the city to reimburse.
It's easier for us to do it instead of the customer going to both of us.
Yeah, it makes sense, it makes sense. The, in the past, in the past, we've had programs where we would give rebates to like big golf courses. And I think there was, you know, like a max of maybe twenty-five thousand or fifty thousand. I don't remember the number. Are we still doing those type of big rebates that, that?
So we do have the HOA large landscape rebates and they're for us the same, three dollars a square foot. Those are all funded through domestic fund. We don't currently have any rebates for non-domestic customers for turf. But we are evaluating grant opportunities to pursue those.
So.
You mean we don't have for golf customers? And, and so the, those.
For non, yeah, for non-domestic.
Yeah, tho, those are all domestic water. So if an HOA has their own well, they didn't, they weren't participating in the turf rebates.
Okay, so, so my question is, other than the three dollars per square foot, do we have any other requirement for a turf rebate? Do we have any other program for turf rebate other than the three dollars per square foot?
Not currently.
No, okay, thank you. Yeah, that helps.
Yeah, I was thinking we should, we might wanna signal to these cities that we're tapering our funding for this, you know, so that they don't go up.
We've had conversations.
So they don't go and approve, you know, massive amounts of money on their end and then find that we never get there.
Can I jump in for a moment?
Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
Good evening. So as Adam mentioned, I mean, I, I think one of the things we need, we'd like direction on from the board is when would you like to stop drought penalties?
As soon as you can.
Okay.
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
Yesterday?
So, I mean, if you can get it done by April first, that's pretty good. That's, that's the end of this week.
So what we'll do is.
And you know what? We have, we have a lot of different billing cycles, right?
Yes.
So, I mean, yeah, I mean, I would, I, I don't know that it's tied to the end of the month in particular because we have billing cycles that are in between. I mean, how many billing cycles do we have?
We have six billing cycles, but I think, you know, terminating them April first or at the first of the month would be best because that would be, that's aligned with our billing cycles. And so we started it on the first of the month when we started the drought penalties. And so in the interest of being fair to customers, you wouldn't want some people who received an additional penalty during this process.
Scott, do we have the authority to, to terminate? Do we, has the state acted on that?
Well, we adopted drought penalties separate from our movement into the level two.
And, and, and the governor, who had anticipated coming out with declaring, or, you know, making a decision on the drought on April twenty-eighth, has, within the last week, determined that the, the drought emergency is, in his executive order, is not, you know, it's, it's, we, we can get away from the tier-two conservation methods, is my understanding.
Yes, and there's some little bit of lack of clarity on whether the State Water Resource Control Board has to rescind their emergency regulations. But I think the, you know, the big thing for our customers, and we're getting a lot of phone calls right now, are the drought penalties. If we rescind the drought penalties, the major actions we have are the daylight watering ban on, at level two and also not serving restaurant, or water in restaurants unless it's requested. So, I mean, we can not issue fines on those two. And I think our customers would be fine. So if you like, we can bring an ordinance back at the April eleventh meeting. We've already, we've already prepared the public notice and I believe that went to the newspaper. We've worked with IS and billing, right, to make it happen April first, if that's the direction of the board?
I, I think it is. I agree with the timing being the first of the month, that makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're talking about three different things. One is a request to authorize the rebate funding. Number two, giving direction to come back to the next meeting with an ordinance to make retroactive the removal of the drought penalties. And then three, moving off of level two as soon as we can, based on the staple regulations. Yeah, there are three items and, and I think we should do them separately. And I'll make a motion that we pursue the elimination of the drought penalties as of April first. Yeah, so that can be the worst direction to staff? We would need to do that by way of an ordinance at the next meeting. Okay.
Okay.
I'll move that we pursue the ordinance to approve next.
All right.
We don't need a motion for that, right?
No.
No, so we do need a motion for approving the additional funding.
Correct.
Which is recommended at a million dollars.
Could you do that motion?
You wanna do that one?
What if I don't want to?
But the worst direction is absolutely clear on the other two, don't worry. I might pay two million dollars. I would move that the board approve the one million dollar expenditure for, to support the additional rebate program participation.
Yeah, and I will, I will second that, but, but you, just quickly, Adam, you, you kind of quickly went over the water savings number that I had asked about. So can you say that again and slowly?
So that's if we expend the full fourteen point three nine five million or remove four point seven million square feet of turf, the estimate is eight hundred and five acre feet annually.
That's what I wanted to hear, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and the nice thing about that is it happens every year.
Right.
So, so just wanted to make one clarification, just so you know, before the vote on the one million authorization. Is with the updated number on revenue estimates for the penalty, a one million authorization means we're reserve spending, so spending money we don't have and coming out of savings.
It depends how much drought penalty you collect in March, though. Cause we don't really know that number, right? And what you're estimating, what what you're estimating in the BAI was one point seven million a month, but what you're saying right now is it's much lower than that. In March.
We think we have pretty good estimates that.
Eight hundred thousand?
That, uh, uh, we'd be short half a million, uh, based on revenue coming in at the end of March.
So what if you just did a half a million and then we can come back in the eleventh and do another half a million if we need to? Yeah, the, well, we have commitments.
Well, we have about, uh, three hundred thousand, uh, dollars in commitments and that then that would leave about seven hundred thousand in the remainder of the fiscal year, is that what you said?
So, uh, the cities have about three hundred thousand dollars that they've they've made available to their residents, that's outstanding. Um, currently, if if the full million is allocated. We have about seven hundred sixty-seven thousand, that's due to we're currently about just forty-six thousand over budget. And I know just in the next week or two, there's also a hundred and eighty-seven thousand already scheduled to be inspected. So that's where there's already, um, in the next week, about two hundred and six, two hundred and, uh. Yeah, forty, that's gonna be reserved.
So then we're about five hundred thousand-ish, uh, pulling out of reserves if we approve the whole thing, that's where the five hundred comes in.
So after everything you said, how much money would we have? Would we be in a deficit, des- uh, des- would we be deficit at a half a million?
Well.
No, we'd have about, what, like, two hundreds or, yeah, two hundred, if you approve just five hundred thousand, we have what, like, two hundred sixty-seven thousand?
Yeah, so I think it's a, it's ten point two, they're estimating another eight hundred thousand through the end of March, gets us at eleven million. And they have a hundred and eighty-seven plus forty-some technically already encumbered. So it sounds like it's either a million or five hundred thousand, but if we do five hundred thousand, then there would be no reserve based on your March estimate.
Right.
On penalties.
We'd have about two hundred and sixty left.
But the date would come pretty quickly, where we'd have to curtail our rebate rebate program or authorize more money. And I don't think that the environment right now is, makes any sense for us to curtail our our rebate programs. I mean, maybe we go off the three dollars, back down to a lower number.
That's, yeah, that was a board item back in April, so that.
But we're still at three, we're still at three, so we could go back to two or something like that. But but I think we need enough funding to get us to the end of the fiscal year.
To have some, to have some kind of program that continues on, maybe add a reduction.
Yeah, I'd be willing to to agree to the, if there's an amended motion at five hundred thousand, but I'd wanna see. Uh, an agenda item at our next meeting to consider additional funding. Maybe we'd have a better handle on it by then.
When when you say goes into reserves, what reserves are those, the domestic reserves? There, you you mean there is no drought penalty funding that could carry, that would carry the the program?
So so this would assume we've exhausted all the drought penalty funding.
Okay.
There's nothing left over, so we're dipping into general reserves.
So you're dipping into that would have to be made up by regular ratepayers, uh. So as you talk about all these programs being funded, uh, through the penalty, uh, fee. Um. Why doesn't it incorporate any of like the grant funding that we have? Uh, is could could we, don't we have grant funding for these programs also? That that you could allocate money into it so that we don't have to go into the reserves?
Uh, there are some grants that, uh, we're pursuing and have available, um. They have different limits or applications, um, I said, uh, this program is specific to domestic. Um, and so if we needed to, there are grant funds that could be made available retroactively.
We don't have any any grant funding for turf right now?
We do have some, but it's not, um. Specific to domestic, it could, it has a more open use. And so we were planning on pursuing, um.
Well, I I thought, I don't know, but maybe, no, no, I'm talking about, I'm talking about turf for domestic, we don't have any grants for turf?
There is turf, so there's grants for turf conversion.
Which is what, which is what we're talking about, right?
Yes, but.
So why wouldn't we?
That, uh, turf conversion grant, um, that's available can be used for, um, domestic and non-domestic customers. And so we're we're working on putting together a program to utilize that, um, for customers that don't have access to our existing turf program.
So I have a question, so would it make sense, um, at the April board meeting, since we're coming back anyway for this item? Will you know the exact amount if you do cut off the penalties at March thirty-first and they can reconcile at that timeframe? Will you have that actual amount of what the final number is for the drought pen?
I would think by the eleventh we would have it.
In that eleven day timeframe?
I think.
I think they have it right now.
We have, yeah, not through, not through the end of this week, but we have pretty close.
I think they're, I think they're on pretty close, I I think they're gonna come back and in April eleventh and say, we're we're we. We're gonna have five hundred, we need five hundred thousand to get to the end of the fiscal fiscal year. After all of the commitments that we have made, the schedules that we have coming forward and what we're matching with, uh, with the with the ci- with the cities. And it seems to me like that we're gonna have to si- make a decision, if we approve five, if we amend the motion and we approve only five hundred thousand. Then at the end of April, we're gonna be saying, we're completely out of money, everybody stop doing anything.
Right.
Um, the con- conservation is no longer important to us because the, uh, uh, of all the wet weather we've had. And I I think that sends the wrong message, I think that we, uh, you know, have done a great job at getting out and and utilizing. These funds and if we're gonna go over a little bit, um, uh, you know, I'll bet, I'll bet worth more than five hundred thousand dollars under budget at the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, let's do it, let's do it then, it's fine, I'm part of it. Okay, so we we already have a motion.
In a second.
Yeah, and just to close the thought on on this grant funding, wh- what you're saying is you could use it for this. But we already have a funding source available for domestic turf conversions. Uh, we don't have one for folks, let's say, that are on their own wells, because there's no way to build it into the rack or use rack funding for that. So that's why we've been looking for other sources of funding, which would be the grant.
Correct.
Is that right?
Correct.
All right, so the idea was, we could use it for this, but but we, we're using this, the rates essentially, which is allowed. Uh, for this on domestic, but it's not allowed for the revenues we get on the rack, so we had to find a different revenue source for for well use.
Yeah, and those have been funded two grand.
So.
Or we don't do it over there.
Yeah, and I and I'd like to get a better sense of that, so when so when you bring it back, uh, in April, when we have to make a determination on what's in, what's out. And as it relates to the grants, I'd like to get a better sense of what we're holding that money for. I I I hear what President Powell's saying, but I just, I'd like to get a a a summary of. How much money we have and what we plan to use it for.
Okay, of course, so.
Yeah, fair enough, so you know what we're gonna, you're gonna bring back in at our next meeting. Also, I mean, I think we should look at changing all of these tier, it was a tier two. What do you call them, shortage level, all these different things that we do about restaurant water and stuff like that. In- including the amount of money on the turf rebate, if whether it's two dollars or three dollars. You know, I think that's something we should at least look at. Okay, there's a motion and a second, why don't we vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, that passed by vote?
Thank you.
Thank you. Are we doing a press release on this?
Yes.
Yes.
Wonderful.
So that tur- the drought penalties end at the end of March, April first, no more drought penalties. Assuming the ordinance passes, which it will.
Well, yeah, but we'll bring that back on April eleventh, yes, we'll do a press release.
Okay, I'm just thinking sooner is better on the press release, we don't wanna wait till next week, right?
Well, and we'll mention that the board's gonna consider it at the April eleventh meeting.
Yeah, retroactive.
Right.
Okay, thank you, thanks, Adam. All right, so, uh, let's see here, we're, that's it for the action calendar, we have, uh, written communications, which. I think we had a couple extras that compared it.
Correct, revised list was distributed, uh, to the board this afternoon.
Right. Okay, two new ones are pending, yeah.
We added the the last one on there that came in, um, earlier today, so we were able to add it on, and that's still pending at this time.
Thank you. Let's see, and Zoe, Zoe, are you presenting this? Can can you do us a favor, I and and correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, I I thought the written report was excellent. That we have in our packet. How detailed do we want this presentation to be?
Not very detailed.
Not very detailed, can we just do a thirty thousand foot, you know?
Absolutely.
Like five sentences or less.
Like we're good, we're in good shape.
Good evening, uh, there is one thing that I do wanna point out to the board, uh, which is water year twenty-one, uh. Dash twenty-two is October one twenty tw- uh, October one twenty twenty-one through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. So just wanna put that into context. Uh, we we present this, uh, every year, so, uh, I I'm gonna just hit the main things. Uh, I do wanna share with the board that we have not heard back, uh, from the Department of Water Resources. On our our alternative plan updates that were submitted at the end of December, uh, twenty twenty-one, we expect. That, uh, we will hear towards the end of this year. I wanna quickly show this graph, this is something we've we've created recently where we show our current, um. India sub-basin wide water use relative to the projections in the alternative plan. Uh, our five-year water use is just above five hundred and seventy-three thousand acre feet across all sectors, which is about four point four. Percent lower than projections, and we did see a two percent decrease, uh, this last water year relative to the previous one. Uh, I do wanna point out that we continue to, uh, monitor many wells, but focusing on the green, those are our key wells, which are now. Uh, the place, uh, where our metrics of sustainability are. Every single key well is above its minimum threshold, this is absolutely great news, particularly I've been, as I've been. Listening to Sigma and other areas, uh, and there are basins that are blowing through minimum thresholds, um. As soon as they turned in their plans, so being above minimum thresholds at every single well in the India sub-basin is very good news. Uh, our ten-year change in storage, uh, again, the light colors are increases, so we're seeing increases, uh, relative to that, uh, base year. Uh, for the year itself, we did see a decrease of about six, uh, seventy-six thousand acre feet. But I wanna point really quickly to the next slide, uh, and the yellow is our ten-year average change in storage, green is twenty. Our ten-year is above zero, uh, and although it's declining, what I wanna show you is the twenty is increasing. Because as we leave those years that had consistent overdraft, we're moving into this time period where we're able to add water when it's available. Uh, replenish water when it's available, and then we go through those dry years where we might have, um, declines, but overall, we are. Just a a year or two away from having the twenty-year, um, change in storage being sustainable. Uh, in Mission Creek, um, again, just very quickly, all of the key wells, there are nine key wells, they are, um. There, there's me- measurable objectives and minimum thresholds, we just needed a little bit more flexibility to operate a smaller basin. Uh, all wells are above minimum thresholds, there is one well that's below its measurable objective, but that is a well that doesn't have a lot of historical data. Uh, so that was considered a pr- uh, probationary number, uh, that we'll be looking at in future updates. Uh, going to the ten-year, uh, or at this point, uh, compared to the base year of two thousand nine. Uh, where we've seen, uh, substantial increases in groundwater levels throughout the sub-basin. Uh, and while we did have a decrease of about six thousand acre feet, uh, in storage for the year. Um, that, uh, green twenty-year line has, uh, stayed very, very stable at zero. So again, really good news being above those objectives and having that twenty-year be sustainable. So, uh, with that, if there are any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
You know, it feels like. It's almost like the mission of the district could have been to be Sigma compliant, when the when the district was first started a hundred and however many year, four or five years ago. You know, Sigma didn't exist, but but that could have been the mission of the district, to be Sigma compliant, I feel like we've been working on this for a really long time.
A very long time.
And you can see the results in this, you know, no replenishment and still good, yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Zoe, I would just mention that, um, the android of fifty thousand acre feet of savings that we've, we're now seeing as a result of this. Conservation effort could have a significant impact on even improving those numbers higher.
So the the eight hundred and five acre feet from the turf conservation?
Yeah.
Yes, every, you know, we have, we have a a multi-faceted, uh, process to managing the basin, one of those is conservation. Reducing pumping, uh, instance, this is from our domestic programs, uh, it does re- uh, reduce pumping, you. Start multiplying that eight oh five by multiple years, uh, and it 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 does, it is a significant savings and every little bit adds up. To managing things in a sustainable manner.
I agree, thank you.
And I'll just mention that, uh, I I I will try to keep us to keeping a close eye to the. Well, levels around the Tommy C Levy facility, because that's gonna be a significant impact, uh, to those numbers, uh, on a yearly basis. And so hopefully, it it's not super drastic, but, uh, uh, it is something that we need to watch.
So when does the Oasis project come online?
Uh, like in a few months.
I.
Next week?
I'm looking at David, but I think June.
June?
Uh, but there may be a component that comes on earlier.
Hopefully, that's a wash, so.
So it may not be a wash, but it'll have, uh, you know, it'll have an offsetting impact, right?
It'll offset, so.
That's awesome.
And hopefully, we see that, right, so.
Yeah, we will see, it'll be not in the local, but in the overall, it'll be.
Yeah, I get, I get it.
And I can't, I can report that just before this meeting, I crunched the numbers for our last trimester, uh, in the East Valley. About seventy-five percent of the wells are forty feet above their minimum thresholds.
How many feet?
Forty.
Forty feet, forty feet.
Yeah, so we are seeing some declines, uh, near the facility where there's mounting, uh, but everything else so far is holding steady, the plan is to summarize these on a trimester basis. Uh, and if we see anything that was to, uh, require more monitoring, we're ready to start monitoring them at a higher frequency.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Zoe.
Good work, so it brings us to nine eight, board general comments, Director Nelson.
I'll tell you, this was a much, uh, uh, more pleasant GSA meeting than I've ever had in the last six months, uh, so that's good. You know, this, uh, I mean, the the snowpack is just unbelievable in California. And I mean, it's in the Mammoth area, which is LA DWP's, uh, Los Angeles River Aqueduct. It's two hundred and eighty-three percent of normal, I mean, it's just.
And they're gonna get more.
It's just unbelievable, and then and then tonight, they're getting another another two to four feet, I mean, it's all record.
Most in history, right?
Um, it's gonna be the most in history, California and as a whole is two hundred and twenty-seven percent of normal, so that's over two years of snowpack in one year. And, uh, Northern California is not quite as good, but but this storm is hitting up there, it's a hundred and eighty-three percent of normal. Where the state water project is in in, uh, Northern California for, uh, Orville. And then the federal project in Shasta, so it's getting hit today, it'll be at above two hundred percent, so it's just unbelievable. Colorado River, though, um, is a little bit less, it's only a hundred and forty-three percent, but still, uh, tremendous, uh, tremen- tremendous amount of supply. Uh, the forecasted runoff. Uh, the forecasted runoff, um, as of today, I just looked, eleven point three million acre feet in the Lake Powell, which three of the last five years, we've been under six million acre feet. So that's a tremendous amount improvement, um, for Lake Powell, right? Tremendous. So, uh, it's, uh, gonna be good. So there's a lot of different type of thinking on, on the river. Just in working with the California Caucus and, um, with the seven basin states is, there's a lot of work to undo the, uh, four hundred and eighty thousand acre feet that was let, that was left in Lake Powell. In twenty twenty-two, there's work to bring that down to Lake Mead, and also for the upper basin to recover their five hundred thousand acre foot, um, release from, uh, Flaming Gorge down into Powell as a droa release, a drought response operation agreement. So, so there's work for that, so if there's work for that, you know the hydrology's good. As you guys know, state water project hit seventy-five percent. Uh, you know, that's, what, about, uh, eighty thousand acre feet for us, I think?
Big, big, yeah.
And it's a big, big number. Big number, eighty, seventy-five percent of basically two hundred thousand.
Big number for LA, for Met, too.
Yeah.
You know, that's gonna change their plans.
That's huge. And speaking of Met, we're, it'll be the first year that we implement our new, uh, agreements with them uh, on, uh, water storage and, um, Article twenty-one water, uh, which, uh, which is really good. Uh, that's a, another pot of water. Uh, we pay, we pay Met to be our agent, so that's, um, that was written in their agreement. So that's, that's really good. And, um, so I'm about halfway through, uh, watching your last finance, uh, meeting. Uh, exciting stuff. Uh, I wasn't able to participate, but, uh, kinda looking through that, so, uh, I'll be up to speed here shortly with you guys, so don't think I'm, you know, bailing on you.
Well, the board presentation, great finance, yeah, the debt and everything, yeah, that was good information.
CIP.
Yeah, 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 taking notes, everything, yeah.
Okay.
So that's all I have.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted, it was pointed out to me, uh, today that this is National Farm Worker Appreciation, uh, Week, and, um, and we definitely appreciate, uh, their work and their efforts. Twelve thousand or so farm workers we have here in the valley plus all over the state, so I think, I just want to go on record. Thank you.
Thanks.
No comments today.
Yeah, with that being said, Director Aguilar, um, Cesar Chavez's grandson is in the valley today, uh, and he'll be here tomorrow all day, uh, going, uh, through several schools, uh, all the way from Desert Hot Springs down to, uh, the eastern Coachella Valley, talking to different elementary schools and high schools. Um, and I think he's here for an actual, uh, celebration of Cesar Chavez Day at the city of Coachella. So, um, if you're interested in stopping by to hear what he has to say, I, I think he has a, a speaking role. I also just wanna, uh, uh, wish Zoe good luck. I know that she's gonna be in Van Nuys on Saturday, speaking on a panel with, uh, some other folks, uh, I think the general manager of, is it, uh, Molten Eagle and, uh, some folks from other districts, uh, so good luck and, and thank you for representing us, uh, out there.
Don't take any job offers.
Yeah, don't, yeah, don't take job offers, please. And then, and, uh, yeah, otherwise in the future, we're gonna say no. But, uh, but also looking forward to seeing, I, I think we have a dinner on Saturday, so looking forward to that, uh, uh, looking forward to, I think we haven't had one of those in a few years maybe, but I always enjoy, uh, the, the funny videos that, that staff puts together, so hopefully there's a funny video, um, make, a video?
There will be now.
Okay, well, there, there's always a video, I mean, I think the last time, I think last time you guys did one where everybody was like, had a cameo, or?
I don't know, Bob Kiran, Bob Kiran, uh, it's hard to live up to that.
Anyways, I, I look forward to, um, to be.
Maybe we'll make our own.
Yeah, we'll make our own, but, uh, I, I look forward to seeing all of you there. I, I'll report more on this, uh, in my meetings, but I did have a chance to, uh, to have dinner with, uh, Assembly Member Garcia and, and the next, uh, person who's set to be Speaker of the Assembly, Assembly Member Rivas. And I mention it because I did talk to him about the, in general, just very briefly, the, the bill that, Senator Caballero is carrying as relates to this long-term strategy on water supply. And so I, I look forward to hearing more about what that's all about. I, I know very little of it, but there has been an invitation to meet the Senator, to hear about it and learn more and see how we can participate in that. I'm sure you've been tracking it, uh, through Aqua, but, uh, for purposes of me scheduling that meeting with Senator, I, I just kinda wanna hear more about it, so looking forward to our legislative, uh, meeting that we have on Thursday.
Yeah.
So, uh, we'll be there, and, uh, that's, those are all my comments. Thank you.
Director Bianco, did you?
No, I'm good.
Okay, I'm good, too. Any requests for future board, uh, agenda items?
Yeah, um, I do, Scott, I do, it doesn't have to happen on the next meeting, but I do want to go through the tiers again, um, the drought contingency tiers. I would like to be briefed on that, and we may want to change those since, since we were, I felt a little like, uh, not, not tricked, and I think you did too, I think the district did too, on, on, when we were presented those tiers to us, on, on that we could modify and change those a- as we went along, but that happened to be not the case when the governor put his foot down and said, everybody has to go do their tier two. Well, we thought we could do parts of tier two, so I think we need to go through and change that, um, 'cause we may be back doing something again in future years, so.
Well, and good point, Director Bianco, and I think lessons learned. It was the first time we activated the Water Shortage Contingency Plan, so I think there are changes that I would recommend as well, and, um, I think it has to go through a public comment process, but we can certainly do that, um, i- in the future.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Good. It seems like that might be appropriate for the next meeting. I mean, it's really similar to what you're already gonna bring back, right?
More involved.
It's more involved, yeah. Okay. Meetings, March fifteenth, Colorado River Board?
I, uh, did not attend. Me neither.
That was the one in San Diego?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't either. Um, let's see, same day disadvantaged communities, uh, Director Estrada, Vice President Estrada?
Yeah, I attended by, by phone, um, and it was, uh, general updates. I think the biggest one I, I, I heard, or at least, and we know, we're aware of this, and, and we're, I think, doing everything possible to accommodate, uh, the Coachella Valley Housing Coalition is, is just, they, 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 they are dependent on the IXTP well that, uh, we just had an action item for today, uh, or it was on consent, I don't recall, but, uh, but we, we are working with them to make sure that their units that they have planned are, are moving along together with our project, so. But other than that, it was regular updates.
Uh, then the sixteenth, Alabco candidate forum?
Yeah, I came to the district office at, in Palm Desert to participate in the, in a forum, um, in which all the, uh, various candidates from both the east and west portions of the county, uh, were present to give a quick, uh, introduction of themselves. I think we all had about maybe, I think, two minutes or five minutes, uh, to, uh, just, you know, give our pitch, talk about who we are and why we want to be on Alabco, and so I, 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 that's what I did.
Good. Uh, same day Sigma Tribal Work Group meeting?
That should be removed.
Okay. Same day, uh, I know you were there, meeting with Jeff Berg, I was there also. I don't know that I really want to follow up with them. Um, we talked and talked and talked, and then so, they sort of slid in somewhere partway near the end that they, they start pitching us for money, which I thought was really distasteful. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Per episode.
To pay for this PBS episode, to talk about water. And, um, I don't know, it just seemed.
Personal?
Well, it, yeah, I mean, how, how many hours do you have to talk to somebody before they tell you why they're, why they're meeting, you know? That's how I felt.
That's terrible.
Yeah. I mean, if they, they can come back to us, and, and, I mean, obviously, we're not gonna pay for their project.
They, they might come back to us. I, I, uh, it does sound like they have plans to do five, six episodes. They've put one together, which was a great episode, by the way.
Pretty good, yeah, nicely produced.
Um, it is, does seem to be a, a group of folks with, uh, me personally, I think they have their own financial backing to do this ep- these episodes if they want, and you got people like Hertz family, um, and, and others, uh, part of this, and so, um, I think that if they come back to us because they want us to be part of the story that they're gonna tell, because I, I do know that in the five episodes, there's a, um, a section that the overall goal here is for them to tell the water story in California. And so the first episode was, um, uh, William Mop, uh, uh, from LA and how LA became what LA is, and Owens Valley, all that. And I think they want to talk about a lot of stuff. I, I, there, so there might be a piece for us in here, uh, but I don't think that we're gonna come up with ten, fifty thousand, so.
Yeah, and I think the pieces, I mean, we, it's interesting to talk about, you know, how we've been sort of Sigma compliant for our entire, which is, Sigma's a big deal right now in California, 'cause there's a lot of basins that are in big trouble, and how they're gonna get through it. But, uh, the other interesting story is, is how we're, uh, working as a district with grant funding to address the, uh, needs for water and sewer in the disadvantaged communities that are within our service area but not our customers. I think that's the story.
Yeah, and I do think they, they have, uh, they do, my concern is that they focus too much on negative stuff, and, and so our, our ask of them was, there's a lot of good things that we're doing as a district, not just as it relates to the management of our resources here, but, uh, with new challenges and new ideas at the state level as it relates to, you know, the human right to water, you know, we're, we're taking, uh, a lead role in that in the state, and so there's, there's a lot positive i- in this valley to talk about, um, versus trying to do a spin, uh, putting blame on, on a particular industry or, or this or that. Uh, so what I asked of them was, you know, uh, if, if, if you're, if your goal here is to tell a positive story, then I'm personally in. If you're here to tell a sad story, I, I don't really want to be part of that. So that's, that, that's kind of my, my take on it.
Yeah, good, thanks.
That's a good take.
Uh, Desert Valley Builders Association Networking Night, I was not there. Nobody was there. Uh, March seventeenth, California Attorney General Rob Bonta visit with Lift to Rise.
Yeah, I was invited to be part of this roundtable discussion with, uh, the Attorney General. Uh, it, it was hosted by Lift to Rise, they're, they're a nonprofit, um, that focus on affordable housing, and they seem to have, uh, uh, received grants from the state. They work a lot with the County of Riverside to implement projects. Um, and so they invited the Attorney General to talk about, um, a number of issues related to affordable housing, NIMBYism, things like that, um, how to make sure that, uh, the laws as it relates to affordable housing are being upheld in California. And so, uh, they invited a number of different, uh, agencies to talk about. We, it was a big roundtable, so we had like tw- forty seconds to introduce ourselves, and then, then we had another like minute down the line to talk, to, to do like our one pitch, right, to, if you have an ask, what's the ask? And so what I said was, um, you can't have any project without infrastructure. Not if, doesn't matter if it's affordable housing or market rate housing, uh, infrastructure plays a big role in, in, in whether projects are viable or not. So when it comes to affordable housing, um, the state needs to make sure that, that there's, uh, money uh, available for the infrastructure that's required to do the housing. Otherwise, it won't pencil out. So that was, that was my one ask. That was it.
Then twentieth, the Chukawala Monument meeting?
Um, so we were, um, we met with staff to go over the boundaries and to get a better understanding of it, and, and I think that, um, we came to a, uh, conclusion that staff's recommendation was to, to, uh, allow it, but not in our service, not in our service, uh, district. So, which would, would cut off portions of that, yes. So that's all, that's, that's a good move.
Anthony, just a quick question, is, would, would that monument, um, would, does that go east, uh, through that, like, that glorious land company area that, uh, is up towards desert center, that area?
Yeah.
Just, I'm cur- I was just curious. I mean, it's not, it's not our, our area, no.
Yeah, it goes, it goes up there.
It, it does, but my understanding is that it's primarily on federal land, so we were gonna limit it to the west to come into our sphere of influence or our boundary, and then it was primarily gonna stay on BLM land, but technically, it is encapsulated.
Yeah, um, I just received some clarification recently that the designation only pertains to federal land. So, um, it, there, um, there's gonna be some more information that's provided that shows how much federal land is within our boundary, so that we can maybe make another informed decision.
If, if we have land that's in the middle of the federal land, and that's surrounded by this, you, 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 you can't do anything, so it's, it's like, it's, it's a.
Yeah, I, I still, I still feel more comfortable just keeping it to our boundary as we have proposed.
Yeah, I think that's fair, yeah.
And, uh, so I was in that meeting, but just to follow up on, uh, on that, uh, which I forgot to mention in, in my comments was, there is a, a VIP geology tour that's scheduled for Thursday, April thirteenth, um, that, uh, is meant to, uh, take, uh, this, whoever signs up, uh, whoever gets an invite to, uh, hike or walk through the Chukawala National Monument as, as proposed, um, with, uh, a guide, Dr. Nicholas Van Buur from Cal Poly Pomona, he's a professor. Um, and, uh, so this, uh, so that's meant to cover the geology. And then you recall that last time I mentioned that there had been a number of invitations to take some flights, and there was some local council members, elected officials who, who, uh, were flown over, over the proposed monument. And so they're scheduling another, another flight, and that's gonna be Sunday, April sixteen, at eight AM, or Monday, April seventeenth, at seven AM or eight AM, so, uh, in case anyone's interested.
I, I, I hope they're taking residents who live around it and not people from, that, that are live forty miles away.
I agree. I agree.
Yeah, exactly.
We have the study session, uh, CIP study session on the twenty-first, twenty-second, golf and water, I missed that one. Director Bianco, I think you might have been there?
Yeah, I was there. Um, I mean, it was, it was well attended. The numbers for golf are down tremendously for the first two months of the year. I think a lot of that has to do with the rain. And I, I think the, the golf community is getting the picture that in the long run, they, they, they need to do some, do some pl- long-term planning with wa- when it comes to water.
You know, uh, just to add to that, um, you know, uh, Robert Chang and I went to the Golf Summit, and we, we touted that the Bureau was coming out with this, uh, um, bucket two, um, um, Bucket Two um, um, funding with the uh by uh partisan infrastructure act uh money. And um, you know, they're moving very slow on Bucket One A. And so we were thinking by the end of March, and we had kind of communicated by the end of March that the Bureau was gonna be on top of this and they're nowhere near uh being able to roll out anything on Bucket Two. It's very discouraging. And we don't even have a Bucket One A contract yet, although uh, we're thinking that that, that process might go into May uh and to be approved. So um, y- you know, hey, we're saving the water and it's real water, so we're gonna get a contract and and we're gonna get some forbearance agreements with Met and IID. So uh, that's kind of the schedule is into May. So but even that into May, then the bucket, they've gotta go through Bucket One B and, and getting to Bucket Two is gonna be a while. So just to get and give you the heads up on what we may have laid out uh as higher expectations.
Yeah, yeah, good point. Um, March twenty-third, Salt and Sea Authority Board.
So uh, thank you, John. Um, so yeah, so I made the trek to El Centro for uh my first in-person uh Salt and Sea Authority uh board meeting. And um, there were probably two items that were of most import I wanted to mention. One is, there was a report that was provided uh via Zoom by a Dr. David Lowe, who is with uh UCR School of Medicine. And he had been uh contracted to do a, a study of the microbial, microbial tox- toxins at the Salt Sea. And they've now determined that, a couple of things. One is that there are, this may not be new news for you, but it was for me, that there apparently a variety of toxins that need to be treated separately, that are affecting the asthma numbers. Um, and the asthma numbers are, are getting worse and they're also spreading farther west into the valley with a direct link to the deteriorating conditions of the sea. So that was really fascinating and also sad to hear. And then there are also, secondly, is kind of considerable uh energy around the, the Padilla Conservancy Bill. Uh, that was discussed and more information was requested on that. I know it's on our, our topic for discussion on Thursday. But it's also coming back to the Salt and Sea Authority for discussion at the next meeting to see where that's gonna go if anywhere. So, so that was it.
Thank you.
And I was not in attendance.
Okay. March twenty-fourth, Assembly Member Garcia, Community Open House. Anybody there?
I, I was there. Um, uh, it, it was well attended. Um, it was in the evening. Uh, there was a, a quick uh, uh update by the Assembly Member on the bills that he's working on. Uh, there, there was a lot of uh different agencies there, uh Desert Rec, uh, uh Valley Sand folks, um, just a number of different people. And uh, it was also um, uh Assembly Member, um, Robert Rivas, who's next in line to be the Speaker of the Assembly also uh made some introductory remarks. Uh, he shared a little bit about um his uh relationship with our Assembly Member. Uh, they seem to have a pretty strong relationship. They both represent regions in the state that are, that are very similar. Um, he represents uh the areas of Salinas is I think what he identifies with uh the most. So very, very uh similar to a, a lot of what we see in the Eastern Coachella Valley. So so a lot of similarities there, a lot of interest on, in the same types of issues. And then I already said this, but that same day, I, I had uh the chance to have dinner with both of them. Um, and uh, and that was it.
Thank you. Are there any other meetings we need to report on?
John, I have about eight. But I, I, I'm gonna send a, I'm gonna send a list to Sylvia and put it on next meeting. It'll, it'll still make it for the uh, yeah, so I'll, I'll.
You can also just submit a written write-up of the meetings if you want.
All right, I'll do that.
You know what I'm saying? Cause that's.
So, yeah, I developed a form that I think somebody used once, like two years ago.
Okay, eh, would you send it to me and I'll?
Absolutely, and you can do that in lieu of verbal reports as well.
Yeah, no, that'd be great. I, there was California Caucus meetings and so on. Yeah, um, yeah.
I had, yeah, I had uh two more meetings. Uh, that's the same day. Uh, so the, the, the open house was on Friday, but the, the big event was Saturday. And uh, the Assembly Member had a, a cohort of legislators here um in the valley to do several things. I know that uh, Anthony, you, you were with them for almost all day, but I, I joined in um when the uh Assembly Members met together at the Yacht Club to talk about uh Salt and Sea projects and the future of Lithium Valley. So uh, we had a roundtable discussion with uh, the, what are those folks' name? The, the same folks that had the press conference with the governor, the, the thermal control system, something like that. They're working on those uh lithium and, and geothermal plants out there in, in Pearl County. Um, so, so they gave a quick uh presentation. They were there, uh Hathaway, what's their, what do they, I forget their name.
Brookshire.
Brookshire Hathaway was there and uh another outfit that's working on, on lithium projects. And then Patrick O'Donnell was there to give a very good update on where we're at with the tenure plan and, and where we're at with projects. Um, and uh, so uh, I was, I was there for that. And then I know you were there for some other portions of it, so I'll let you.
Yeah, I was there early in the morning. I had breakfast. Um, we had breakfast at the Two Doors Ranch. Um, there was a lot of people there and then we, I took them across the street to some date farms. And uh, we looked at drip and we also talked about our Assembly Bill eight sixty-five. And then we went to the yacht club and, and met with a lot of folks over there.
Yeah, just for uh, for, for reference of who was there, it was the Assembly Member Garcia, uh Assembly Member Robert Rivas, uh Assembly Member Sabrina Cervantes, who's the Chair of the Latino Caucus, Assembly Member Corey Jackson. And I think later on, um, Assemblywoman uh Elaine, uh Eloise, I think showed up, so.
We also met the new director for IID.
Yes, and we met the new director from IID. She was there, Gina.
Gina Duxter.
Yes.
Yes, very, very wonderful to meet her.
Yeah.
We did let her know that we kind of, you know, said we were working on trying to build better, better relationships. So she was on. Yeah, so, so, yeah, it was good to meet her. And then um, yesterday I was uh asked to be part of an Aqua Tour for Region Nine. Uh, that seemed to be very successful. There was like a full bus. I know there was uh some attendance here from, from our staff. I think Rick, you were there and Victoria, some other folks. Uh, but I was asked to uh just share on the ride back from uh the yacht club back to Palm Desert about the work that we're doing in the East Valley as it relates to consolidations. Um, it seemed like overall the, the tour was well received. It was a long day. You guys went around the Salt and Sea. So uh, you guys did a whole loop. Um, you went all around it. And um, and yeah, there was a presentation by, by Scotts, uh Scott Slater um at the yacht club, um, which was interesting.
For uh Cadiz?
No.
Really?
There was almost no mention of Cadiz. I think there was a plug in there on purpose at the end. Someone asked it and it almost felt like it was, it was, it was planned. It was a plant, like a special announcement, but uh, uh, but.
Tribe, no?
But uh, but uh, but most of it was related to the law of the river. And that was the bulk of it. Yeah. And that was it.
Oh, that's good. He, he knows about that.
And I thought he did, uh, I thought he did a fantastic job. He really hit all the points from a historical context to where we're at now. I, I thought he did great, so.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the meetings reported on?
Make a motion?
I'll second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Pass by both. Assistant General Manager, report.
All right, really quickly, just two quick things. Uh, firstly is the COVID stats. We have four current qualifying cases, two direct contact situations. So we have six people off work due to COVID. And for the month of March, qualifying cases, we have eight to date. And then secondly, um, you know, really pleased to hear about, you know, state water project going to seventy-five from thirty-five and, and some of our other issues. But we are, as a staff, we are hoping to have some really big months. Uh, you know, a few years back, we got three hundred eighty-six thousand in the ground and we're hoping to have some forty thousand acre foot months coming up here and we're ready to go, so.
That's wonderful. Yeah, good to be ready.
Thank you.
Council.
I will pass today the main issues we're all talked about.
Thank you. Any departmental reports? I really doubt it. All right.
I would just say, I've never seen you trying to get out of here so fast.
Why is the kind of, we should have started this at five instead of six.
Yeah, me too.
Normally start at five.
I, I.
We didn't have a closed session, so we just left that hour blank.
Yeah.
Right? I would have started at five.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Anyways, uh, with, with no further business, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
We're always learning.